Well, meeting the order, stand for the right place. Commissioner Pitts will not be with us tonight, he's out of town. And the other thing is that, in case anybody hadn't heard, that we did pull the, had the water rates pulled from the agenda this evening, so we will not be voting on that. And also, that will give us an opportune time to really meet with Artesian again, and also find meet with United Works, it'll give us some time to work on this before we make any decision. Okay, with that, you get the approval in minutes of August the 3rd.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. The motion to accept the financial payment?
Second.
Yeah.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. No budget amendments, Steve?
No, not tonight.
Okay. Lewis?
First item I have tonight is the Bakersill LLC PWA for second addendum. We're maybe aware that the town executed a PWA back in 2008. The Bakersill LLC has put in development Red Hill, Ben Boulevard, Aaron Court. The agreement was amended one other time regarding those letters of credit, and the representative on Bakersill has asked for a second addendum. Second addendum provides for the Aaron Court to be developed separately under Phase Two, and that would include the lot starting from 56. Currently, that development has issued, we've issued 31 building permits, issued 23 occupancy permits, and we have 22 building permits that are pending that were on Ben Boulevard. All, none of the development in Aaron Court has been developed yet. I would ask that the board agree to the addendum number two, or the second addendum to the agreement, which would not require surety by Bakersill until they, until time, until such time that they apply for building permits. So it's no, it's no threat to the town or the public not to have that surety in place until that time. So I recommend that the board approve second addendum to the PWA with Bakersill LLC for the Ben Boulevard project.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the second addendum for Baker Hill LLC?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Second item I have is the acquisition, acquisition of the Bell Hill Road parcel. As the board is aware, several years ago, actually in 2006, Border Lodging LLC presented a commercial project out there at Woody Lane and Bell Hill Road, pretty large and aggressive project. Since that time, the project has become relatively dormant, but in the process of their development of that project, they identified a portion of land, specifically 7,259 square feet, that's contiguous to the Bell Hill Road adjacent to our tower, disowned by the Maryland Transit, actually the state of Maryland, the Maryland Transportation Authority exercising authority over. We have, we negotiated with them to purchase that property for $7,260. The developer, Border Lodging LLC, paid the money to the town to purchase the land. We've, we've been going back and forth for a couple of years with Maryland Transportation Authority, but their, their board and the Board of Public Works for the state approved it, and they sent the deed to us, a quick claim deed, and we have since recorded that deed on July 25th, 2011. I would ask that the board accept the deed for that Bell Hill parcel, since it was paid for by the developer and is now the property of the town of Elton.
Okay, I get a motion to, for the acquisition of Bell Hill Road parcel.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item I have is the 2011 road restoration project. At the last meeting, the bids were open, the apparent low bidder was Meadows Construction. We subsequently sent all the bids to our engineer for review. The engineer came back and recommended that Meadows be issued a notice of award. Consequently, I did issue that notice, and along with the contract consent into Meadows, the project will cost the town $281,828.95, assuming there are no change orders. The project involves milling overlay and related street improvements to Road A, Road Six, Road 10, Road 13, Road 14, and the intersection of Road B and 9 and I for the matter, a section of milling and overlay on Whitehall Road adjacent to Buttonwood, adjacent to Buttonwood Road's courts, and Buttonwood Road parking area between 300 and 400 block. Contractor required to commence work within 20 days of the notice of proceeding, complete all work within 68. This is just a matter of information for the board as a matter of public record. Next item is informational, involving Pico Energy property. Pico owns the property at West High Street and North Bridge Street. Many people might, might remember that Coningo Power Company service building was there for many, many years. Coningo Power Company was purchased by Delmarva, and is no longer in business, but the property at High and Bridge was retained by Pico Energy because the Coningo was a subsidiary corporation, or subsidiary company of Pico Electric. Pico Electric did an environmental assessment, actually did on several environmental assessments of that property, and they looked, they found in the soil, a lot of organics, heavy metals, and PCBs. A lot of that material has been already removed, but I think there's still, actually, there is still some material left in some of the soils on the property, and they've entered into a voluntary cleanup program with the Maryland Department of the Environment, and submitted a, a public action, or response action plan, which I believe will be approved by MDE. We met with, Gene Minner and I met with Pico representative Gary Carey, he's the Regional Special Affairs Manager, on August 12th, and at that time, he not only informed us about voluntary cleanup and the plans for Pico Energy to restore that property, but he also informed us that the buildings on the property would ultimately demolish, and Pico would leave the clear lot for sale for commercial and industrial use. The voluntary cleanup program calls for a cleanup, even though it's an extensive process, the cleanup would allow for future commercial and industrial use, not residential use. The zoning of that property is BI commercial anyway, so it's very consistent with what they're intending to use of that property. It's 9.532 acres, three parcels. A lot of people don't realize, it's not only where the service buildings are, there's a pole yard next to it, and it extends down on the west side to the railroad tracks where they, where they used to store poles and everything. So it's a pretty large commercial tract, and if it's ultimately developed into a commercial or industrial lot, I would see commercial, would be a valuable business asset to our community. It's a matter of information I'm presenting. Last item I have is Eastern Shore Natural Gas. Eastern Shore Natural Gas has already appeared before the board and given an overview of the gas line that they plan to build through Elton. A portion of that gas line will go through Marina, or is planned to go through Marina Park, and across the creek, enter into, go across Route 40, onto lands of the town from the waste where people plant down Florida jitters on that side, then extend down. The town doesn't own land beyond that point. Pursuant to that, I notified Eastern Shore that the town would require compensation for the use of its land and for a permanent easement. They have subsequently provided a temporary workspace easement cost or offer to the town, and I listed it on a sheet that provided to the town, for one space of 2408, and I outlined where that is. $4,260, it's a temporary use of the property, not permanent use of the property. One parcel, 1477, that's in front of the plant, $1,370 for the use of that property, and temporary space, workspace in Marina Park, $6,190. The permanent easement for parcel 2204 reaches Marina Park proper, and the 20-foot easement between the Seasons Pizza and the creek, it would offer the town $35,065. That price is consistent with the price that the town accepted for pivotal utility holdings company. Initially, they offered 30, but I did a calculation in terms of cost per acre that the town accepted for pivotal holdings, and I subsequently submitted it to Eastern Shore and approved it. So the price of the land that they, that they would pay us for is the same as the town agreed would be accepted. My recommendation tonight is to give the matter consideration, not to vote to accept it at this time. All right. That completes my report.
Thank you. Anybody have any old business?
I do. For old business, I know at our last workshop, the Historic Commission was here, and I, we heard them at the end of our meeting, it was a long meeting, but I really think we need a special meeting with them again to discuss that and to see where we're going with that.
I believe Jimmy's got, oh, Corey, he's going to come to the workshop next month.
Perfect, okay. That's all I have.
Yes, I think we've, I can't remember the date, but Louis, you have to help me out on this. YMCA has, has some conversation about hooking up to the Septa system, and I know that we had some piping that was put in place for that. Is that a true statement, Mr. Lou George?
Do we have a pipe to hook up to?
Did we, did we do some work to be able to connect to their Septa system?
Only what we've done to date is to hire a crewman to do a, a plan for the connection of that property that would run from the Lacy Highway and intersect our force main from the State Highway Road, run by YMCA, which would allow them to connect, assuming the board would permit it, and connect to the location of our sewer, existing sewer at 545-279. We have not initiated a project at this time, but we have the initial engineering plan completed.
But they are a customer of ours as of today, and through that conversation, it was brought to my attention to see if the board would entertain the, the motion to hook up the Septa system to their, their system to help them out, because I think they're at a point right now where, they're at the point where they're ready to shut down because of that. You might know a little bit more about it?
Well, the, in order for them to connect us, they would have to agree to pay me some charges, and I don't believe that I'm prepared tonight to, to recommend that to the board and the City County YMCA agrees to pay those charges.
Okay, well, may, maybe I may have to rephrase that. We may be able to set up a time to discuss this with the YMCA director and the people there involved.
Well, that's basically true. I serve on the wide board, and George Patchell, who is the CEO or executive director there, certainly would like to entertain a conversation with the town of Elton in that direction of getting the connection done. So, Louis, I could either, either have him contact you, or you can contact him, but preferably I'll contact him so that he can start a conversation with you, if the board totally is offered that to happen.
Well, I thought too, didn't you talk to him some, a couple of years ago when we talked about that once before?
I talked to him, Patchell, a few times.
I understand.
About the project, and I've been out there, YMCA, they, they do have an issue with percolation out there, and they've had, they've temporarily put bounds in, but I think it's nowhere for them to stay in business, so to speak, if they would need to connect to us. But the cost to the town is significant too, with respect to running the sewer line from Maron 7, 40 to 545-79, and we still have to get the clearance from the State Highway and MDE on that. And the thing that has me so most concerned is not necessarily the removal of the force main, which hangs beneath two bridges, the twin bridges, one bridge being over the Loel Creek and the other bridge being over Antrack. When we proceed with this project, state may require us to move all existing sewer underneath their twin bridges, which would include work under the Antrack Bridge. I don't have, I don't know if any of you realize that dealing with Antrack is probably feet under itself, but the State Highway, I don't anticipate being a problem or an expensive account, but dealing with the State Highway, I'm reluctant to deal with that without.
Well, certainly, there are going to be some obstacles, and you're presenting them right now. We just asked that you would engage in conversation with them, and then let us know whatever feedback there is.
I will do that, and I will quantify the cost.
Right.
Potentially associated with the project, and bring it back to the board, and they can make a decision about whether to afford the costs.
Thank you.
Mary Jo?
Other old business, Louis, did you look into the fact, and a lady asked the other day about kids walking across the bridge on Delaware Avenue, and she's probably 77 years of age, not that that has anything to do with it, but it certainly bothers her when she drives across and see people walking. I know we all brought that up before, and so I don't know at what point you've engaged in finding out what could be done, if anything. She even went on to have a walk bridge across there, which is probably impossible, but at least she was trying to think of something.
We, we did contact the State Highway and ask them if they would suggest any improvements to the bridge, and I know they forwarded that to the Bridge Division, but not received any response from their Bridge Division at this time.
Thank you. That's it for me.
One thing I have basically is that, I guess if I noticed, we got our 225th anniversary mugs, finally. It's very nice, and they will be there to, for our big anniversary next year, and I'm sure we got anything going on for that.
We've got lots.
I'm sure, it's going to be a big thing, so we certainly would ask somebody to make sure they come out to our 225th anniversary. That's my thing I have. Mary Jo?
I would like to see if we could possibly have a meeting with the chief and the lieutenants in charge. I, I know the deputies are, they're, they just are doing great, and once there's a crime and solving it, and I, I want to know what we, what more we can do, because neighborhoods and everywhere, it's just getting out of hand between the drug deals and prostitution, and, so I think I would like, if we can meet, have a special meeting with everyone involved, to see what more we can do to get our hands on this.
Okay, working to work something up. Chief?
You set it up.
Okay.
Most of 515 and 517, North Street, if you ride past there every day, there's trash out there. I'd appreciate if you could send an inspector there, I think Bob Lissenberg, I guess you travel that route, I don't know if you see that trash, but it's out there repeatedly.
What, 517?
And 5, 515, 517, I came from work today and you ride through North Street, the street is perfectly clean, but you see that trash out there on a regular basis. And certainly, school starts next week, and not that that would be a problem for the kids, but it's still bad. Appreciate that much. Louis, was there something about a dog park that, unless somebody wants to explain something, or do you know that parks are wrecked, brought up?
Yeah. In fact, she asked me about it, and she sent out, asked the board what their feelings were too, but I also took Louis, myself, and Mary out to the one up on Arnhill Road, up there with the Arnhill Park. We looked at that one, and it's very feasible, we can have one, so Mary looked into more of it, and she put in for a grant to see if we can get it and help us build one.
But what's just a dog park?
It's just a fence and an area for them to run around in. You've got a large, large, one for the large dogs and one for the small dogs.
And where would this be? Any suggested site?
Some sites were mentioned, and I think Marina Park, and then one in Meadow Park East, yeah, so we just have to look at the areas, because all, the other problem is that all our parks are in floodplains, and putting a fence up there is another problem, but we found out that we could put one up there, but it would have to be a breakaway fence, to keep anything when we had a flood, because you know all that debris, but the fence would stop the debris, and that would pile up, and of course, that would force your water to go elsewhere to flood, so they checked with the stage and everybody, and they said that if we had a breakaway fence, that we probably could do that. So we're looking all the options.
Okay. I know there's been concern about the, the rise in cost of water, sewer, how you want to put the comment, combine two items together, and has not been a vote, and I guess we're still looking at measures to help people pay the bill as well as yours truly, and I see again that Artesian wants to talk to the board. Did everybody receive an email which came today, I assume?
Yes.
Is, is that a pleasure that you would like to talk with them, which is scheduled for Wednesday, September the 14th, if that's good, that's the date that Louis sent?
I suggested that as a workshop time to meet with them, and I have contacted them to see if they're available. That's plenty of notes, so maybe they will.
And Louis, I guess you was in conversation, what is the gist of their wanting to meet, even though I guess we still would like to meet with them to augment the cost if possible, but I don't know, what is their desire?
Well, the matter I talked with today, with John Thader in particular, and I don't take the liberty of speaking for him in any manner of means, but one of the things we greatly discussed was the fact that the 375,000 gallon a day minimum the town is obligated by contract to accept based on the 1.5 million reserve they hold for our backwater supply fund, could potentially be mitigated if the town agreed to a long-term contract with the Artesian Water Company. And the reason I say that is that current contract provides for an initial term of five years and five subsequent five-year terms, but there's a provision in the contract that allows either party to terminate that contract with at least six months' advance notice prior to the expiration date of the contract, which would allow us to notify them to, that the contract would, would be expired or severed, however we're going to look at it, if we gave notice. In essence, by having that clause in there, Artesian or the council, I guess, views that contract as not, no more than five years long, because that option is in there. I think they wanted to amend that option in order to extend the agreement for a longer period of time. The reason they went a longer period of time, I was trying, not liberally, is so they can return, get a return on their investment. They put in significant improvements in order for the town to have the backup water supply, even though we shared a cost of 4,000 plus feet, 20-inch border line, along with the Pico and Delmarva easement, and some of the cost of engineering, it still was a significant outlay of capital for that company to put in, and they don't enjoy a benefit from it except from the town of Elton, because I imagine as Artesian Water and Maryland expanded, and Maryland knows to use that infrastructure as part of their capital plan, but in order for them to get a property return on their equity, they need to have a revenue that they can count on, and that revenue could be substantially improved by a relationship with the town and an extended agreement, so you know what I mean? So I think that that's one of the things they are looking for, to come in and say, who went to town to extend the agreement, or not, not have a knockout in a five-year interval for them to get their money back. How much money do we get back? I don't know, but I know they got, we've got a lot of money in it, so I can imagine they got quite a chunk in it themselves. So essentially, that's one of the probably crucial things they're looking at in a discussion with the town. And I tell you this because it might be something you want to think about seriously as we go forward with the discussion with Artesian. I would say that whether we enter to agreement ultimately with nine in Delaware, that they may look similarly, because if they, even though they would require the town to provide, whoever, to provide money towards capital improvements to their system, they still would try to recover those costs in order to maintain a return on their equity and their system, and they have a very substantial investment in their, in their equipment also that might be necessary. I don't know if there would be a pump station in order to provide water to us or not, I don't know, but that could be very expensive too.
So, so if you're allowing a thinking, even if we are in a five-year contract with them now, and withdrawing from that contract is reciprocal on both sides, what happens when you get into a long-range contract? Does that, does that clause still fit the mold?
A longer-term contract would perhaps open a window of opportunity for the board to discuss with the management of Artesian, a, as I said, mitigate that, that, you know, take, and that way the cost could be lower to us. I don't know if they would do that or not, but I think we're open to a discussion of that, if, if they can have more of a guarantee on income from the town, and a lesser amount over a longer period of time.
That's.
Pretty sure that that's what they're looking for.
Okay, I'm done.
I have to go after the Givens, Commissioner Givens, because I figured you have some comments on that subject, Louis. He didn't have none on tonight, that we had that conversation when I poked the guy in the eye, I guess that's what the paper said, and I'm a little upset about that statement, but anyway, I'll move on from that. There, and when the meeting comes, I have my comments on that. I'm a little upset because the meeting that was set for tonight, we have several taxpayers that have planned on coming here for the water vote. I was underimpressed that when you have three at the corner, and I don't know why or how that was pulled from the system based on another commissioner not being here. To me, that's a wrong move, and I don't think it's right to take it as a may, but it still should have been voted on. Me being a taxpayer, I would love to have my vote, or being able to put input in here for that vote, and then have it voted on, but yet, I see that through politics, things have been moved through, and I'm going to leave that alone. As far as for the dog park, through a phone call, yeah, I had a conversation about a dog park. I have no clue who went out and went for grant money, but you said Mary did, and we stole them for a recreation center. Anybody working on grant money for that? Just a question. Things that are important and things that we need and we want, we seem to be going around it and getting other things in place, and getting things on the books through grant money. I still would like to see a recreation center here in the town of Elton for the citizens and for the children in here at Caesar County. And again, I stress that because it's something that we keep going around, not, not pushing hard for it, but we keep going around, and it's not getting done. Now, for the doggy park, again, I don't own a dog, don't wish to own one, and I don't know who does own it, but yes, you want a doggy park, and you already got locations? We don't know nothing about it, except the board, and I'm upset about it, and that's all I have to say.
I can tell you, as far as getting grants, Earl, for the, we have not decided on one.
Turn your mic up. I can't hear.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. We don't, can't go after a grant yet because we haven't decided on one, plus we also have another gentleman coming in at the workshop to make another presentation to us on his property, so we haven't come down to a point where we have decided for one particular spot where we can say, this is what we want, this is what we're going to do, and this is how we're going to go about it. Till we get to that point, they wouldn't accept a grant from us, number one, because they'd say, where is it at, what you doing? We don't have any plans yet, right now.
Do you know when this last person's coming in for?
Coming at the workshop.
The next one?
Right.
When is it?
September.
14th.
14th, so, as long as people are still coming in, they, they want to offer their support and see if we'd be interested in their property and if they're building one there. So unless you decide you want to have a cutoff date as to when you want to stop these people from coming in, you know. And the dog park, I think was Mary's thing, was the fact that the county happened to see, county happened to get one, plus you brought up the situation with the dogs and their problems in the, in the park, we thought maybe this might be a different thing.
That's a whole different line, that didn't have anything to do with a dog park. For one, who's going to be liable for the dog park? Is it town of Elton? If a dog bites someone, who's going to be liable? And another thing, do we have to go get a insurance policy and everything else for that park because it's town property? If so, a dog bites another dog or another person, who is responsible? And I, that's a whole different line of my conversation. My conversation, and which was thrown out of proportion again, was about some dog going on the, on the football field and, and doing his, his business there while the kids was playing. That's all that was about. And I asked the guy to clean it up, he didn't do it, and that's where all that came up. And all of a sudden, the dog park came up. I don't understand how that ties into it.
Okay.
Oh, we're just, we're done, yeah, we're done, okay.
Becky. Now, I'm going to ask you, just stick to the point and stick to the direct, your questions or anything you have to say, just direct it to us and make your point, okay?
Number one, I agree with Earl Piner. We need something for the children, number one. He's been working with this for the last years that he's been in here, working with the town, trying to get something. Evidently, Mary Jo, Mr. Givens, Mr. Hicks, myself, we've all been working with getting this. Number one, I think we should have that. I think the dog park should be left alone. They're going to run around anyway. We haven't run up and down the street. Where I did, they run behind me. Nobody does anything like it. The dog catcher passes them, goes on down the road. Where I go every day, dogs run loose on that roadside, that's it. And nothing's ever done about it. It don't matter how many times you call. So why should we waste our money and get something for the dogs to let stay in like Mr. Piner said, invite you, Mary Jo, me, or somebody else? Who's going to pay for that? Louis? Because you all have insurance, I know that. I work with dog catchers, I'm covered. You have to have, where you have a dog thing, you'll have to have insurance. So the towns going to have to have insurance on people and the dogs. They do have to have that. So if you have a dog thing, you'll have to pay insurance. I will see to it and I will make sure. How you like that? So therefore, we do need something for the children and our dogs. I live at 150 East Main Street. We have nothing, nothing other than the bingos that I run. And that comes out of my pocket, which I don't care. I don't care. We have to have something for the seniors and that's the immediate promise that I'll help the most. So that's part two. I thank the chief of police and his officers for being out today where I was. I was very happy to see them. I'm trying my best to do some things uncovered, which I will get done with the road and handle problems with. I already took care of the children. They've been well taken care of, already in foster homes. When I go to do something, Jo, y'all know, I'm sure Mr. Piner already knows and Mary Jo, Mr. Givens, I get it done. I don't stop till it is done the right way, not the wrong way. I don't go behind nobody's back and play games. I don't do things like stun around here. It's stun and puppet. If you don't like me, I don't care. I'm going to do it anyway. I'm 71 years old, I'm going to heat it up, I'm going to try, I helped Elton increase apartment for years, and I'll stick with it. They do some things that I, I need some more help with where I go every day. But definitely, we need, like Mr. Hicks, Mr. Givens said, North Street is a disgrace to Elton, Maryland, as though is Water Street. I'm sure you all ride around that everywhere. It's a disgrace. We've got to get this town looking like it needs look. We have older people that stop for Elton, we have young people that stop for Maryland, a period. They come here for car shoes, they come here for fall fest, they come here for a lot that Mary Jo has. Thank God for her. But the point is, I would like to see something. And you're the mayor, you're the head of everybody in here. I would like to see something done about the trash laying around, setting around in Elton. Why do we have to have this setting around and laying around in the town of Elton? I, from North East, Elton. Jones's Chapel was built 300 years ago. And there is nothing down around there but like this paint.
Becky, you've got just a few minutes, seconds left.
And we need to do something and you need to help us get it done. Please help us so we can look like Elton and appreciate the people coming in.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. This is Allo, she's still there, she's.
Our question was answered about the water rates, but we'll jump on our topic for a second, about the trash thing. Are we looking at something? I don't think there's recycling things working. I'm not sure they're developing around here.
When's it good?
Okay, winter. Going into there, nobody does the cycle anymore. I've got, I've taken pictures like almost every week, there's a trash display. There was a mag in my mailbox yesterday, I'm going to check my mail, because people are piling up trash. A lot of people back there have more than three or four babies with diapers and then I keep them in houses. And then with the summertime, it's a tad high and so walking, it's the trash smell and everything. So a little disturbing to have a mag inside your mailbox, the trash pile are extremely high because they're putting them out every day, you know. Of course, recycling is on Thursdays, but I think a week is way too long for a trash collection, the summertime especially with barbecues and things like that. I don't have a bunch of pictures. This display coming, so it looks like in the mag, it's still. I feel surprised.
Louis, you might want to take a ride around there, see what we can do, if we can, so we can collect that. Mike?
Afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner. I just want to make a couple of comments about the workshop that I saw Wednesday. You folks have a really tough job and I do appreciate that. You get the most technical things put before you.
You can speak in, yeah, you can speak in that, please.
I can do that, sure.
Does that work?
Okay.
I just want to say, you really do have a tough job and you get lots of technical issues put before you and you're in the public eye and you have to make decisions. That Wednesday meeting would have given anybody a headache because it's some of the most complex things that come before you and it's hard to sort through those things and you probably don't have good briefings on them. But the one I wanted to, you know, there were, I heard really important things about the community, such as the, the plan unit development with 2,500 homes. Boy, was that complex, just sitting here listening to it. But the one I want to comment on was the, the historic district one. On the other side, your rules are probably the most restrictive of any community and local governmental body in the county in terms of comments. So like if you hear things that you truly object to and would want to just offer a professional comment, in the county, you're allowed to speak into some of these things at different points and they'll take comments before they make decisions and things. But there were a couple of things there that I, that there truly is a different perspective. Now, I heard Commissioner Jablonsky say, you're having Cory up from the, I guess the mayor said that.
Yeah, he's coming up.
And, because you really need some professional advice here to hear the other side. And I'll give you, give you mine in really fast order. Elton has some very historic corridors that deserve protection, just right down East Main Street. That is a credit to any community. And that's the type of thing, as I hear each of you struggle with stabilization of your communities and stopping the deterioration, it's a, a real public policy issue for a leadership body like yours to deal with. You know, that's what these types of things do. And any community would be very proud of that East Main Street corridor. I mean, it's high quality, it's got some risk, growing risk. And it's exactly things like this that the historic district ordinances are designed to protect. I think there are other historic district communities, the Maryland Historical Trust, for instance, found in a survey that the town had done, that there are five corridors here that are highly worthy of protection. East Main Street, I think, is the most, most valuable, I mean, it's just readily apparent. So from like Rollins's office on out, that's got a strong fabric that's a credit to any community, you lose that. Now, the standards that were said to be too difficult, there's only 10 standards and 60 supplemental pages that are like guidance. So there's not, and I would disagree that they're so difficult that you can't comply with them, though maybe you need to rethink your districts and your zones, but, but they're not. And one of the things the state wants you to do is to develop your own style manual, your own guidance manual. There was some discussion about that, it was a little, it got real confused in here because four or five people were going in different directions and things. And the style manual is meant to allow you to decide how we want the community to be. And there's another legal point called contributing. So like if I'm on East Main Street, out at the far end of East Main Street, that's a strong historical fabric and you should be stricter there. You've had rulings and decisions come before your commission down on Landing Lane. Well, it's really not a historical fabric of theme. And the, the laws and ordinances recognize that and they're called non-contributing, meaning you don't really make very strict decisions. And, and you're, in fact, your commission has done that. So I would ask you to weigh all of that very carefully. I thought the testimony was very confusing and I don't believe it's the official recommendation of your board, I kind of monitor that. And if you'll notice, we're just about two members speaking along those ways of disbanding the district or drastically shrinking it. A couple of the others were more concerned about enforcement of rules. And having watched them proceed in their proceedings, they, that doesn't seem to be an official board recommendation, though you probably, you heard more talk about, about that. And by the way, the county does have a historic district. I am going to be the vice chair of it. And I would have loved to have said that to you, but I do believe in following rules. I very much appreciate Commissioner Piner when he calls things back to order sometimes because it's, you know, your rules are your rules and, and they should be adhered to and done professionally. So thank you for your time.
Can I just make, let's make one comment. Now, thank you for that comment, but, Commissioner Piner, but I want to say, I want to say, I know that you've been dealing with the historical business for years in the town of Elton. And I may be making some enemies and to make, make some best friends, I don't know. But I would like to see you be a part of this decision-making with the historical thing because you do have background and knowledge of this. And if you, you talk about the professionals, most of the time when you get to history, we usually find out that you have something to do with it. So I don't know how to do it, but by asking, maybe we need your assistance in this.
Yeah, well, Mayor decided not to reappoint me to the board.
Well, I'm not saying from the boards, now, now, let's, let's keep this clean.
Okay.
I'm saying this in a nice way for the town of Elton, not, I don't care about personal stuff, I'm not, I'm not getting into that. I'm saying for the best interest for Elton, if you're the one that deals with the history, history from years and years, why not use you instead of worrying about the board? The board can have their say, but I would like to see you in part of it.
Yeah.
And I was actually, I had a visit from Judge Wilcox and Mrs. Wilcox. And they had some great thoughts on this also. And that's what geared me to saying, we need to really discuss this as a whole and get some input in it. And I was, I did not know 30 years ago, there was an Elton Historic Committee trying to do some things here, but, and that was new to me. So, you know, there's a lot that's going to have to be taken in.
Yeah, for sure.
And the brief, the historic briefs that I have are the 10 guidelines, so I was quite confused with the 200 pages. So I'm not sure on that either. So I'm glad Cory is coming to.
And that's the complexity, because you folks as elected leadership of the community can't be experts on, you know, those 2,500 pound things, it was the water utility rate before that. It's that, I was dying to speak up, but I follow rules, Commissioner Piner. If you say I can't speak, I don't speak, you know, and, and things. But, so at least you're doing, and I just wanted to come, I didn't know tonight you were going to have some comments on it, Commissioner Jablonsky, but I just wanted to come and introduce to the record because, you know, you might believe you're thinking what they said is the, is the decision. But I'm glad you're hearing from others and Commissioner Piner, thanks. And, you know, meetings should be done professionally and if you decide to bounce somebody off, that's the way it goes, it's the real world, you know, it doesn't matter.
I'm saying, I, let the board consult and figure, if you would like to volunteer to help out with that, I would love to see you on there. And we, as a board, to talk about it. And hopefully, like I said, the past is the past, this is about the future for the town of Elton.
And, and think, the county has a board too, and they, they have a board. So there are, you know, there are some other subject matter experts and things. Elton's really got some valuable. The downtown area has suffered, your Commissioner Clark was describing it as such as cheese effect, and I think that's largely true. But, all right, East Main, it must mean, I think, is beautiful too, it has potential. So, thank you very much for your time.
Goodbye. Jesse?
Story one. Is this tape recorder or a scrub?
Pardon?
Is this tape recorder?
Yes, yes.
Should I speak to the camera or should I speak?
Speak to the mic.
How long do I have?
Five minutes.
I have like eight items. First of all is.
State your name.
Jesse Wilson Jr.
State your name, address.
Street of Elton.
Street of Elton.
Chief Ryan, for some reason, this keeps showing up on my cart. It's being a nuisance and I have an injury there, there's my pink spot. This is your department.
Joe, you better straighten them out.
That is item one. Item two is the harassment and bullying and defamation of character from corrupt Louis Canower, has been studied for three years. Item three, assault charge by Officer Bertrand, witnessed by Abigail, when confronted with unauthorized use of the department dumpster, which also captured Friday night by Mr. Canower's camera on this blue unmarked car. If you would like to see a tape. I also have a picture of the first incident.
Have you, I mean, we can hear that, but more or less this is a police matter and I think you need to take this up with the chief.
Listen, I'm being harassed, I want you to put pressure on one police department to stop the harassment and the home speech.
No, sir, you have to get with the chief and we'll, you know, talk with him and he's the chief of the, of the police and he has the powers to do whatever he wants. I mean, he's the man.
Unsecured.
Depend on him. So you need to take it up with him.
Your dumpster is unsecured and you have data shredded material in there which is unsecured and I'm pretty sure it has my stuff in it. So get a lock on your dumpster, please. My information is that I'm, I'm sure about you guys. Number four, leasing a Marina Park by the homeless for a dollar a year like the ball field near your park. That's what I'd like to see, because we want to build some stuff down there too. So it's my bad on you. Since, since the $500 fines, this item five, since $500 fines have been issued last week for people using a gazebo, I'd like to see sign, fines issued for the sidewalk signs. My understanding is that orange can't have sidewalk signs in front of your business. Is that correct?
You can't have what?
Sidewalk signs. You know, my burgers had price today. It's an obstruction of the sidewalk.
Sidewalks.
This is the public domain of Howard House.
They've got to get a permit.
I asked the parking enforcement guy to do it once ago. He said it's a police department, for some reason they won't do it. So let's see, about the fine for the dogs. You're going to make a, a dog park for the dogs, but you won't fine it for not picking up their poop, but you're going to fine citizens $500 apiece for using a gazebo. Fine the dogs. If you like pictures of the dogs pooping on grass.
That gazebo, that gazebo is not ours, that's private property. That's not ours.
The police doing their duties, bring it up.
Why you want private property?
That's a bit private, doesn't, yeah.
I love to do it, I'm just stating the facts. Why does the, why does the parking enforcement go to places, private, private right parking?
If the property owner calls for the police, the police do their job.
Okay. Just clarifying some stuff. Where is the street benches that have been removed over the years? After the businesses, we're bullying citizens. You can be charged with the RICO Act. You're catering to this. You're catering to business.
I will answer that, because the street benches were moved for all our summer events, for the music, when people like to sit up there close, and that's where they're at.
No, no, we're not.
Some were being, are now being used at the county courthouse for the new garden, if that's fair.
Also, believe it or not, we had a couple of them stolen.
Uh, now, they were third everything because somebody was sitting on it. That was the one next to post office.
No, these were elsewhere.
Uh, that one shut back down because the citizens started removing themselves.
Okay. All right, that's, so let's get with the chief and then see what we can do, and we'll go from there. All right?
I placed a lawsuit with a lawyer on Main Street for $50 million.
That's, that's your, that's your business, that's not our business, okay?
Sent it to the government office.
I'm asking you now, okay? We understand what your, your problems are, so.
Uh, I'm just stating some facts of a rap, and you guys have already paid once.
Okay.
So the question is, it's starting again. It's been three years I've been sitting around here waiting on it.
Okay.
All right?
Very good, thank you.
If anybody would like some pictures, if it wasn't only our town, I'll be glad to give you $6,000.
That's fine, thank you.
Offered to the police already, but they laughed at me. So I'm pretty sure you don't wanna be sending it to? Your name's Jimmy, right? You're in the bar down the street?
Okay.
Let's make it so.
Scott, yeah. All right, that looks like it's about it, I get a motion to.
Before you dismiss, Earl brought up a point. I know I've been on this board a length of time and first came here, we didn't have a recreation department, and we put Clyde Van Dyke in charge of it, and he had it for many years, and then Mary McGaw came along, and she's in charge of it now. And still, I think, you know, we haven't done anything for recreation as far as getting the building, and time keeps going on. Is this gonna be a broken record, or should we discontinue it? You said there's one other person who's gonna come about and discuss their property.
No, that's one, if you guys wanna cut it off, I mean, do we, just say no more people can come to us, or?
I don't know, that's what I'm asking now, should there be a cutoff date, or what are you gonna do if we're gonna proceed?
Well, we can have this one as the last one if you so desire.
I think so, it's been long enough. I mean, when did you start this? It was a while ago, and then people started coming in to offer us or make some presentations, but I think it's time, this is the last one, and then we get together and look at them all and see what works best.
Okay. I'll just be the last one then, let them make an offer, and we'll go from there. Then we get everybody together and, from all together and see what we come up with.
I think the first thing, you need to have a site, and certainly you'd have a lot of people coming here offering their sites, but then I guess we need to get with Steve Ropole to find out the, if we can actually afford it, the affordability of it, considering other things next year with your budget and your police pension and, and just a number of things there. Then when you get to building up, the operating costs, you know, it, it's, it's very detailed, and we need to see if this is something that can be done, or if the plan that has been given to us costs X million dollars, maybe we need to get something downsized or on a smaller scale to at least accommodate the kids, with maybe provision add-on in the future, you know? We, we keep talking this, and it's gonna keep on going out the door, so, you know.
Well, there has been plans, I think, that we can look at where you can build a building in the modern age now, and look at the future and have it expanded. We can go that route.
It doesn't matter, I just think if you, if you're gonna do it, then you need to talk about it, if you're not gonna do it, need to say we're done.
Well, I think the thing is also, we have to find out what property, where we want this location.
That's what I said, that's the first thing.
And because you cannot go after any grant unless you have a plan and where the property is, you can't, there's no way you can do any further work, and I think that's why Mary has a small open space grant through the county, she's looking at using the money there and thought of the dog park, but, because we don't have, we're not ready to go for a grant for a recreation center right now. But as soon as we hear this other one, if we choose a property and, and have a, you know, a drawing, and, which we have a drawing, if it would fit in the property we choose, we can then see what grants are available, so we could do the budgeting of it.
But what I'm also saying is, even though the cost of that building may not be something that we can afford.
Right, I understand.
Well, that's one thing, we, that Steve and they put all this, the figures together for us, and then give us a rough idea of what the total cost would be, so we can do that. All right, anything else? That's all, if I can motion this.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor? Miss Spex, motion, yes, meeting is adjourned.